Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, Ms. Bullock.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Bullock. Good afternoon, everyone.
I'm like the National Community Board of Educational Order. First item is adoption of agenda and entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm a move.
Motion by Mr. Washington, second by Mr. Silver. Call the role to vote to approve the agenda. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Right here.
Mr. Biz?
Here.
Mr. Sharp? Mr. Dunn? Mr. Jenkins?
Here.
Mr. Silver?
Present.
Ms. Washington?
Here.
Ms. Bullock?
Here.
Everybody's in favor of approving the agenda? All opposed? Nobody opposed? Number three, celebrating the class of 2020. Information only, Mr. Tom.
Good evening, Board Lamb, Vice Chair, Washington, members of the board, and Dr. Ellis. As we know, our seniors missed many traditional activities due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Fortunately, this virus did not hamper our school administration, staff, parents, or communities from developing unique opportunities to celebrate and honor our 2020 senior class. All of our high school principals are with us tonight in order to share special highlight moments encountered while celebrating and honoring the class of 2020. Tonight, we will begin with the Early College, then we will move to Nash Central High School, then the Northern Nash High School, Rocky Mount High School, then the Southern Nash High School, and last but not least, Tar River Academy. So now I will turn it over to Ms. Jennifer Sharp.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all are well. I want to read, not, I don't want to share my words. I want to read the words that I received from a couple of our graduates and some of our parents. These are from our graduates. "I wanted to take the time to let everyone know how grateful I am for everything that y'all have done for me and my fellow classmates, especially for giving us the opportunity to quote-unquote 'walk across the stage' so that our parents and loved ones could see all of our hard work paid off. I know that it was not an easy task, but I truly appreciate all of your hard work and efforts to make this graduation season memorable." And from the parents. "My wife and I thank you for the best graduation ceremony we could hope for under the circumstances. We were so pleased by everything you did to make sure their high school ceremony was memorable. Please also extend our gratitude to all those who were assisting you. Great job on the graduation service. Under trying circumstances, the Nash Rocky Mount Early College made this time of celebration special. Thank you for all you have done. I appreciate how much time and effort went into the graduation and how it really made my child stand out as an individual. Everyone there made it about her, and it was as close as possible to what she would have experienced as if it were the normal graduation. It meant a lot to our family to see her graduate." And these are just the students and parents that took the time to put into writing their appreciation. We, as parents were coming through the virtual graduations and the filming, we got a lot of appreciation and gratitude. And the students as well. We had students who had not even planned to participate in graduation for various reasons. And when all this came about and we announced we were going to have a virtual graduation, we were scrambling to find caps and gowns because they had not ordered them. But we made it work, and we made sure that they had that graduation experience. Some of the special traditions that we were able to hold on to, one was having our college liaison president to also read their college accomplishments. And our photographer took individual pictures of each student tossing their cap, and he's going to digitally put all those together into one big picture like we normally have. Normally, after graduation, we get all the students together on the front lawn, and we take a big class picture with them throwing their caps. So even though we had to do some things different, we were able to preserve some traditions as well. We had some marshals who came out and volunteered. And we don't have a auditorium. We don't have a gym. Normally, we use the Brown Auditorium, and we use all the setup that the college has for their graduation. So this year, we were fortunate. Our academic booster club stepped up and provided ferns and staging to set the stage, so to speak, and also balloons so that we could create a, like a photo booth opportunity for our students so that after they walked for their graduation, they then had opportunity with their family members who were present to take more celebratory pictures as well. So those are, those are just a few highlights. I'm not sure if we're supposed to take questions or if we're supposed to just move on.
We can move forward.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just like Ms. Sharp, we too had very, very similar experiences here in Nash Central High School. So I will just share with you just one of many emails of correspondence that we received from a parent and students. It pretty much captures all of them, and his is the shortest of them all, so I'll just take the shortest one. And the parent wrote, "I feel compelled to send you this email to express my sincere gratitude to you and your staff in making my child's graduation as special as it could possibly be under the current conditions as we now face. It was quite evident there was a great deal of time and effort from you and your staff in preparing for this ceremony, and I simply wanted to know how great, you to know how grateful I am. For such an important milestone in a child's life, I sincerely appreciate how the parents were included in this joyous occasion. I feel blessed to have had my child attend the school with such caring faculty and staff. The actions of you and your staff bring great credit to Nash Central High School and to the Nash Rocky Mount Public School System. Thank you again for a job well done." And again, this was just from several emails that we received, the staff and me personally, and just really captured their experience. And we would like to look at it as we had over 200 individualized, personalized graduations for our students and their parents because they had the opportunity to spend that time with their child and their child only, and to celebrate their child and their child only. And as one parent, to sum it up, as one parent said to me on the last day of graduation, she said, "This was not virtual. This was a live graduation for, for us." And so that really made us feel special that we were able to please them and give them the gratification that they so deserved. Thank you. During a lot of feed.
During a lot of feed.
Okay, we were very, we were very appreciative of our staff and of the parents of our students, just giving us an opportunity to give them a graduation, giving them that opportunity to walk across the stage, and we made it very personable for them. Two comments that we received from our parents. One parent stated that she felt like it was a red carpet experience from the time they entered our campus, coming into parking lot. Having our staff assist with parking. And another comment that we got from a parent was that the high school graduation experience was very personable. It felt like it was all about their child on their special day. They didn't feel like it was rushed. They had some of the best seats in the house, being able to walk right up to the stage and take pictures. And after that student walked across the stage, we were able to interact with every single family and congratulate them on, on that big accomplishment. We started off, May the 13th and 15th, with distributing cords, which you will see shortly in a picture. Like I said, on the 18th and 19th was the actual graduation day, where it was very personable. We had our staff on hand on campus to cheer those graduates as they exited, exited the main entrance of our school. We also invited extended family members. Although they were limited to two family members per entry of the building, other family members were outside spaced accordingly where they were able to welcome their graduates. If we, if we can go to the next slide, this is a picture of our graduation. This was on day one of our graduation. These are two of our seniors that we're very proud of, and we just wanted to give you guys some type of visual of what occurred here last week. This is another highlight that we had. Up at the top, you have two of our student athletes with their football coaches. The coaches were very extremely proud of them. And I'm proud to say that's my son there beside Coach Ferris. He's on the right-hand side. But both young men will be going to play college football next fall. And the very next photo to the right is a very happy father picking up his daughter. He was elated. She was elated, and it was hard for us not to, not, not to shed a tear, but just watching these families just so happy. This was a challenge. I will tell you this. This was a challenge because in this photo below, you have triplets, so you can understand how challenging that was for the parents and grandparents not really able to be in the gym during the actual ceremony. But like I said, family members were invited, so they were able to welcome their grandchildren when they exited the building. But those are our triplets. We had two sets of triplets to graduate this past year. And to the far left of that, that's one of the triplets. That was her senior son that every senior had, and I'll talk about that a little bit more next in the next slide. This was a picture from our court pickup that occurred over two days. We did that by alphabet of our last name. The graduates was very pleased to receive their honor cords. It also gave them an opportunity to see each other again before graduation. Although they, they, they had to space themselves, they were very pleased with their academic achievement over the last four years, and we were very pleased to honor them with their cords on that day. This was the, pretty much the icing on the cake for our graduates. This occurred yesterday. This was the town of Red Oak Parade, our senior parade, where all the signs were displayed on the highway. I know I counted at least 70 to 80 vehicles that participated in the parade. Those vehicles that participated were parents, grandparents, aunts, relatives, former Northern Nash alum, and former students that just graduated last year. I saw a number of students who graduated last year in the class of 2019 just wanted to come back and support these graduates during this effort. Final slide. This is just a collage of pictures here. We had so much support from the town of Red Oak. We had so many sponsors who sponsored purchasing the senior signs. And towards the end of the parade, we actually had a ice cream social for our seniors. That's one of the photos that you see in the bottom left-hand corner. There's a lot of, a lot of seniors there. They were just happy to see each other, and they had a chance to mingle and talk with their teachers and our staff and so many community members. It was a really, really great day.
Did everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Certainly don't have a lot to add. From what my colleagues have already shared, certainly I can share a lot of those comments as well. Did give all of our student athletes who were seniors that had their sport seasons abruptly interrupted. All of those got a Griffon picture frame with the REM in it. We sent out a message to all of our seniors to please send in their information, tell us where they're going at the high school, and so we did a senior spotlight and spotlight on all of those seniors, and that was posted on Facebook and Twitter. And we created an award ceremony since everyone couldn't come in the building, and this was done in the form of a YouTube presentation. Probably the most exciting for me was the distribution of yard signs. And I remember vividly on the day when I sent out an email to teachers, I asked for four or five volunteers to please hand out over 200 and some signs. Well, in a matter of five minutes, I, I bet I had 25 to 30 teachers who responded. I sent out another email, "I have enough." And eventually, about 18 teachers came to school, picked up signs, and delivered those signs inside the county and outside the county as well. Keep in mind, we do have an IB program, so we have, we are serving students that are not within our county. So I had teachers driving all the way up to Halifax and Wilson County to make sure those seniors got a sign. Could you go to the next slide, please? Before I go to the final slide there, one other thing that I did do. You know, it's one thing to kind of share stories and stuff. I've always been a proponent of putting myself out there and just, just see what people say. So I actually created a survey, and I'm just want to, it was a very short survey, but I want to read off some of the percentages that came back from the questions that we put forth to our students and parents. The first question was, "I was given adequate time to complete necessary tasks, collect senior folders, take pictures, etc." Now, this Likert scale is set up on strongly agree, disagree, satisfied, up to strong, I mean, agree and strongly agree. For this first question, 90% rated us three or higher. The next question, "Rocky Mount High School put a lot of time and effort into making the graduation more personable." Again, on that 80% three or higher graded us on that particular question. Third question, "The faculty and staff at Rocky Mount High School made this graduation a success." 82.5%. And lastly, and probably the most important question of all, because we did have to put safety first, "I felt that the health precautions taken, social distancing, gathering of 10 or less, etc., protecting my family and myself, 95.4% stated that we actually did that." On that final slide there, just to speak about graduation a little bit, I think what you will see that all of those students have in common there, the size, that's just an awesome picture and background, but the fact that every single one of those students have a real smile, that is the most consistent thing throughout all of those pictures. When you see Mohammed there in the left corner, I mean, he was excited. He's going to be going to USC. You have Amy on the right. She's going to ECU. And Charlene, who's going to be attending Howard. Personally, in my 12 years of conducting these, it's by far the best graduation I've ever been a part of. Too often, you know, graduations go by so quickly, and you know, you call a kid name, they come across the stage, you quickly shake a hand, and then the next kid is right there in front of you. I literally spent five, five to six minutes with every single graduate and had a real conversation before they actually walked up in front of that camera. And to see those parents five to six feet away and, and to see tears in their eyes, no one can convince me that it wasn't a real graduation, and, and like I said, it was the best that I've ever been a part of. I will leave you with this story. There's a kid that I've been working with since I've been in Rocky Mount. He was a sophomore when I got there. Troubled kid. Just to be quite frank, kid that got in a lot of trouble. I remember one day, I think this probably happened at near the end of his sophomore year. I was going upstairs in Rocky Mount, and I heard this commotion. And he was in the office with one of my APs, Mr. Mayner, and he was just yelling, screaming, crying. He had just gotten in some trouble, and unfortunately, he did have, have to get some consequences. So I went into the room, and I said, "Son," I said, "you know we're going to have to call your mom." And as soon as, you know, so we picked up the phone, we called his mom, and I always let kids tell their parents exactly what offense they have committed. And before he can get everything out of his mouth, she just immediately start cursing to the top of her lungs. So I took the phone from him, and I said, "Ma'am," I said, "I handle this. He is going to have to come home, but I will handle this from this point." And I remember that kid on that very day. I mean, just still very emotional, tearing up the office, crying. But the thing that stuck with me most is he said, "I'm the only one that's still in school. Both of my brothers are locked up, and she loved them more than she loves me, and I'm still in school." And so graduation came when we recorded for three days, and this kid walks up, and he stands beside me. He takes his, he looks into that camera. He takes his picture, and then we face his mom. And she's sobbing uncontrollably, and he whispers to me and say, "I'm sorry, y'all." "Mr. Kovin, I made my mom proud." And, and so no one in closing can convince me, not only myself, my staff, my colleagues, no one can convince me otherwise that we did not do the best job that we can for our parents and students, and I know our parents and students are proud of our effort. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good.
Good evening.
So I'll try to be brief and, and share a few things as well that my colleagues have just shared. What a wonderful and fantastic day it was to partake in the virtual graduation. And very much so, the common sentiment is the intimacy that we were able to share with the students. When they were coming in the building, having staff members greet them when they come in the building, they had their own personal room with their family members. The family members then dawning, and for the first time ever, for several of them or, or any of them at all, actually being able to fix the cap and gown on their heads and, and the stoles and, and the actual gown and making sure that everything is, you know, proper and appropriate. Because countless times, they're in the gymnasium or wherever they are in terms of graduation, and they never see their student after they, after they leave their site on graduation day. And a student who is the, the last of three firebirds that come through the school, her sister was her, her second guest to come and, and graduate. And one of the things that she posted in comment, it was, "It wasn't the graduation that I imagined for you, but it was some ways that it was even more special. Having a close-up view and being one of the first to meet you when you walked off the stage as a new graduate was so much more than fighting for a glimpse of you over a crowded gym." And that spoke volumes, not just for that particular student, but for so many families that came into the school. They had discussed and shared that how well organized our school had been, and I complimented the staff on that. And I, I shared to them, I said, "Look, I want to be on stage smiling a whole lot. So what goes on beyond, behind the scenes, I, I'm crediting that to you all, and that's why I want to share that about our staff and the phenomenal job that they've done." As you can see, we had a senior class parade. It was kind of just in the back of our heads originally because we didn't even know if we could do it during this, during this time. We thanked the Nash County Sheriff's Office who helped facilitate that. They got in touch with all the other emergency management, as well as the town of Bailey, Spring Hope, and Middlesex, and all the smaller townships along the way to where we had Stanhope Fire Department, Bailey Fire Department, Middlesex Fire Department, Spring Hope Fire Department, Pharaoh's Fire Department along the way in Samaria. So many, you know, police officers and, and families and, and just people. It was almost like a casual day to them to where they got, got to stand out in front of their porches in the shade, and it was over a 40-mile journey that our, our seniors got to take. And they all, you know, from the start to finish, everyone was safe. There was no accidents that day. It was truly an opportune time to celebrate. And so to cap things off, once they got on stage and they got their pictures on stage, those will be developed and, you know, shared with them. There's also going to be an entire data file to where there's going to be pictures where they got to take pictures with their family, and we took those pictures for them because we wanted to capture that as well. And speaking to some of the coaches who are monitoring the other locations we opened up and, and had monitored on our campus that day. For example, Coach Foster, Coach Foster mentioned, he said, "There's, there's some kids I've never seen on the football field before, but they came out there to take pictures just because this was their school." The entire community really wrapped itself around our seniors, and we're greatly appreciative of them. Southern Nash News was out every day that we recorded. He, Mark Cohn, recorded with us to capture every single student, every single expression. I don't know if anyone saw his comments, but he posted that his analytics in terms of all the viewing of our, just in one day, was over 3,000 persons was able to view the graduation. And granted, we couldn't fit that many student, family members inside a gym, social distancing. We couldn't fit that many people outside in the stadium being socially distanced. So I'm, I'm very proud of our entire Southern Nash community, as well as our district in general, and all the, the many different things that we've had in terms of awards night and having just even brainstorming new ways to share material and share information and share awards. A lot of things that some people think need to be tradition from now on, and I'm like, "Whew, that was a lot of work to do," so we'll see about that. But like I shared, very similar effects and very similar comments, even from those who originally were skeptical. They then came back and said, "Thank you for making this special," and that's, and finally, that's what our students had said as well. They, they used the terminology of, that we are extraordinary and we are resilient. And if you look back at their speeches, that's what our students said. "I didn't tell them to say those things." Those are the things that they shared, and, and our student council president, our Hispanic student that gave the speech, he was not planning on graduating. He was upset with the, you know, way things that transpired, and I, I personally called him, and I, and I gave a plea out to all of our students. I said, "Look, if selfish enough, I want to see you all graduate." I said, "I've worked with you all for three years, and I want to see you walk across the stage, start what we finished, and we begin with the end in mind from the day one where we walk across the stage and we hand them their wristbands that we are all in." At the end of the day, we want you all to be all in and, and graduate, and, and so many of them did that and had the opportunity to do that. And so many parents were greatly appreciative of that. So thank you for allowing us that time to share with you all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good.
On May 20th and 21st, approximately 35 graduates participated in the virtual graduation here at Tar River Academy. Students and their parents were very, very excited to participate in the virtual graduation. Parents shared that they were appreciative of the hard work and dedication from the Tar River Academy administrative team, the teachers, staff, custodial team, and you'll see a few pictures there. Let me share at least two emails with you, if you don't mind. The virtual graduation was good, and I felt that it, it was it was carried out nicely considering everything that is going on with the pandemic. The precautions that were taken for the safety of everyone were handled very well, and the staff was great. Another email, frankly, I appreciate what you did at the level you carried out the graduation. The school did not have to do anything, but I feel the graduation was successful. Have nothing negative to say about the graduation. I really appreciate the staff for caring and providing what you could for my child under the present circumstances. Give the staff an A plus. Of course, this graduation team, this season was unlike any other. We worked very hard at making sure students felt honored on this special day for them. I truly believe those that were in attendance, be that grandparents, parents, foster parents, group home members, friends, truly appreciated the intimate setting and experience. F Y I, as a result of one of our students being hospitalized, is our goal to facilitate the commencement process for that student in the morning. We are extremely grateful to First Presbyterian Church for providing a very, very nice banner, as you can see there, as we use for the backdrop in our lobby. A huge thanks also goes out to the H D Pope Funeral Home, who provided each of our graduates with a coronation. All graduates received a yard sign and still are receiving those yard signs as they come by and pick them up. But we really, really enjoyed the opportunity. And that's pretty much it from Tar River Academy. Most of my colleagues have pretty much summed up the particular system and the process that we use as a result of the COVID nineteen. Thank you.
So at this time, we will entertain any questions?
I'd like to commend everyone with their efforts for making graduation a success. I know, I won't even begin to imagine the things that you have had to continue with because change is not always easy. But I think in light of the current circumstances, you did an excellent job of keeping everyone safe and still making the event special for our students, and I greatly appreciate that.
And I agree with that. Thank you so much for your effort.
This is Reggie Silver. Would each principal tell me how many students graduated from their respective school?
For early college, we had sixty graduates.
Rocky Mountain, twenty-six.
Tar River Academy, thirty-seven.
Northern Nash, two fifty-six.
How much?
For Southern Nash High School, we had two hundred and sixty-six students, and that was a one hundred percent graduation rate.
I don't think I heard from Rocky Mountain High. I missed that.
Two hundred and sixty-two, sir.
Thank you. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Thank you for a job well done. Awesome. How much money and scholarships did we raise? This is Evelyn Bullock. Does anybody, does anybody know?
Ms. Bullock, over at Northern, we're still calculating those figures because we're actually still receiving, students are still getting award letters and scholarships this week as we speak.
National Central High School, we're still calculating.
Same at Rocky Mountain High. We were able to put a lot of the scholar, the major scholarship awards in our program.
At the time of our award ceremony, a few weeks ago, we received the most scholarship money in school history, which is over five point five million dollars awarded. But there again, we are still also getting some more scholarship money being turned in at this time as well.
I am so proud of each of you for such a job well done.
I just want to piggyback on what Ms. Bullock is saying. I just want to say thank you, principals, for your attitude. I'm sure you've got the kind of calls I've got the last month, but to muster through all of that and come tonight and make your presentation, it just blesses me. Thank you, John.
Mr. Ward, how many students did National Central graduate?
Two hundred and seven.
Thank you. Mr. Biz, yeah, I've got a question for our principals. So with all the different things that we've done in each one of the stages of graduation, do we include our parent advisory council and our student council, class student council in those decisions? What to do?
So we have parent leadership on our leadership team. I don't know if you recall Sandy Hall, who is also our cooperative extension leader. She has two students at our school. And we've received a lot of input from her as one of our parent liaisons. And like I said, we work closely with our student council on many different things. And also, we wanted some things to be a surprise for them. But we also wanted to provide or receive some input. So our senior advisors did an excellent job with that. Also, one of our student council members, an underclassman or junior, she actually took it upon herself in reverse to have a remote celebration for our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week, and she solicited information from her, from her fellow students and asked them to write thank you letters for the teachers so that they felt appreciated as well.
Oh, that's nice.
Dr. Ellis, at the onset of this, we actually created a celebrating seniors committee. And one of our parents who actually works for the district was working close with members of our committee. In fact, whenever we got to the point when we were looking at the cost of yard signs, and I'm looking at my budget, I was like, this is what I can afford. That parent quickly rallied up a group of parents, and they actually paid half of the cost for those signs. And those signs were almost nineteen hundred dollars. And they raised that money like two days.
Very similar experience here at Northern Nash. One of our parents, like our first, our first day of celebrating our seniors was the honor court pickup. When I pulled up here to the school, I had a parent, Cindy Puckett, who was outside decorating with one of our teacher leaders. She's also, that teacher also has a student that just graduated in the class of twenty twenty. So together, they coordinated with other staff members to help decorate this place and make it look very memorable and offer that awesome experience for our class of twenty twenty.
Any other questions? Thank you, principals, and thank you, Mr. Thompson, for that information. That was for information only. Thank you very much for a job well done, everybody. Yes, ma'am.
I move that we accept the presentation for information only and place it on the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Bullock. Just for information only. Motion being made in a second. Mr. Jenkins, I will entertain the motion during closed session.
I made the motion that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one four three dash three one eight, eleven, A one, and A three, and A six to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute one fifteen C dash one one, to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee to prevent the disclosure of confidential student records under General Statute one fifteen C dash four two, and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney.
Motion by Mr. Jenkins. I have a second. Second by Mr. Biz. Anybody opposed to going into closed session? This time we will go into closed session.